Here. Holman.
Here.
Candela.
Here.
Juan, here. Sullivan, here. Please rise to the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great unity and justice of God. Okay, we now will turn the floor over to the superintendent for presentations. So we have a few presentations tonight.
We're going to start out with, we have probably one of the most famous people, not only at West Oak, but I think in Mundaline and possibly all of the state, because we have blasted this notice out about how Marcia Tagala is our Illinois winner for West Oak for the Doodle for Google contest. And I know this is something that our teacher, he is someone that made, or excuse me, submitted for. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Wilford, who is going to introduce Mrs. Song. And this time we should do a little introduction of the contest, and then your impressions of her. So, Mr. Wilford.
Thank you, Dr. Sharmel Lewis. We are very blessed that Marcia's here, and we're very excited, as you can see from the pictures. Just real quickly, I was contacted by Google, I would say about two weeks before the end of the school year, and ran down to district office, first to Mr. Hanson, because of Google, and then to Dr. Sharmel Lewis. And then to Dr. Sharmel Lewis. And we swore each other to secrecy, and I think we did pretty well. We did pretty well. And, but it was exciting, because when you get a call like that, to find out that we're blessed. So, it's only fitting, because Mrs. Song has had four students this year recognized for their incredible artwork, three at the Stevenson, and now Marcia with this as well. And we're very blessed to have such talented students. And I'm just so grateful, and I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Song, so she could talk about the Google for Doodle, and the fact that Marcia drew this incredible design, and that, you know, we're voting. We're doing the Chicago voting method. So, Mrs. Song.
Can I stand here?
Yeah.
I just want to tell, for those of you that don't know the background for Doodle for Google, they have this contest for the past ten years, and I've introduced it to all of my students. It's not a homework assignment. I just like to, any type of contest I get, I let my students know about it. They are welcome to work on it in class when they're done with a project. There were maybe fifteen or so that were given to me. You're only allowed to choose a certain number from West Oak. So Marcia's was one of the ones that were chosen. She gave it to me, I was telling Mr. Wilford and Mr. Hanson, she gave it to me two days before it was due. So I was in panic mode, and I ran to the post office immediately and had it overnight to Google, to make sure I got there on time. But we are so excited for Marcia. I'm proud of our teacher over here. And I just wanted to give Marcia a framed of the article that was put in the Daily Herald the other day. I showed it to her on Friday, but I'm sure you've had plenty at home. But I just wanted to give you a copy of it. And please just continue to vote. You can, I found out, you can open up the window constantly and constantly vote for Marcia. So we're hoping that she will be in the top five.
So can I invite you and Marcia to please come up, and so we can recognize you and take a picture.
I'm getting...
Mr. Rogers, would you be able to take a picture?
I can't, I'm outside.
I asked Mr. Hanson to, and I just sent you that video, Mr. Hanson.
Oh, yeah?
If you did, if you can. This is for you. You've got so many flowers. There you go. You can never have too many.
Make it, make it pretty.
So thank you for your leadership, thank you for your advocacy, your support for all of our students all tonight. Thank you, Andrew, for sharing your experience. Hang on. All right, all right, we're seeing this. Mr. Wilford, would you like to come up?
Sure.
You could put that picture, you could put that picture back up.
Yeah.
Well, he's doing a little bit of an exception.
I'll save it for the podium here.
Marcia's flowers are in front of her. And there we go.
Okay, one, two, three. Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
And just in closing, we wanted to share with you, we have the Daily Herald here, Google came out from their national headquarters, Pago headquarters. So this is just a quick moment of the event last week, and it was on their website, on the Daily Herald website.
Right here for winter school. So we're here to celebrate, and we're here for our community, in this world where you're... So you were going to meet your hosts, and turn them aside, and figure out who is going to be the winner of our...
This is a revelation of our current problem, too much of the human chaos with how we dispose of our garbage, and other problems regarding Earth as a whole.
So thank you, Marcia, thank you, Mr. Tagala, and thank you, Mrs. Song, for coming. Our next presentation is Ms. Val Diamond from SEDOL. And I know a lot of our board members are new, Val, so this is a great opportunity for you to come and share what SEDOL is, our partnership, and then your goals and how we work together.
Great. So thank you for the opportunity to come and take a few brief moments of your time. I appreciate the partnership with this whole team, and with Dr. Sharmel Lewis also. We were very closely together to help support your students. SEDOL stands for the Special Education District of Lake County. Our main campus is in Gages Lake School. And we also have a school board, but it's actually made up. We have two boards. The first board, which actually meets tomorrow night, and we have a governing board orientation. So one of you volunteers, or is elected by your peers, to join me on that governing board. It's made up of thirty-one member districts that come together throughout Lake County. We meet quarterly. And the governing board then delegates to the executive board, which meets monthly. Our executive board is made up of governing board members, a few superintendents, and then the regional office superintendent. And they're the ones that do kind of what you do on a monthly basis, of being able to approve our policies and procedures. But the governing board helps to approve our budget, which we'll be going over our first budget tomorrow evening, our draft budget. Then we also have our central leadership team, which consists of myself, an assistant superintendent of curriculum, business, and then HR. And we work in tandem to be able to help our students really fulfill our vision statements of all learners to lead productive, responsible, and healthy lives. We do that with partnerships with our staff, and also partnerships within the community. And so these are two opportunities that we've had this year. We have a foundation that we work with that helps provide extra opportunities, because students with special needs have additional costs with their needs for education. And so our budget doesn't always cover those enhancements. And so we work with the SEDOL Foundation. The Enchanted Backpack Program donated quite a bit, forty thousand dollars worth of supplies for our classrooms. Yeah, at Gages Lake School, it was a very exciting day when they came. And then Warren High School, their athletic department actually did a food drive. We run a weekend backpack program. Because when we talk about our learners having healthy lives, it's about what they're doing in the classroom with, because they have special needs and they need additional support. But it's really supporting the family as a whole and the individuals. Because most of our students, we have a large population that are on free and reduced lunch. And so this was one way that we could fund our backpack program, which actually runs all year long. Our mission statement of providing exceptional services for exceptional students. We support many of your students that are unable to be supported within the school building. And then we also provide classrooms within a general education building to be able to help them and move on their goals. This specialized equipment here is one of our new and most innovative. It actually puts electrodes on your head, and then it does a hearing test. For some of our students, and most of our students, they are unable to do the traditional screening where they beep and they raise their hand. This allows families, instead of having their son or daughter be sedated, they're able to come to our campus, and we put on the electrodes, and we're able to see how their hearing is doing. So we go beyond just educational services in the classroom and do audiological services. We have a lot of students, and you can see that in the picture, that need to have more movement, need to have different sensory needs. And so we have a lot of different gross motor rooms and sensor rooms within our school buildings to be able to help those students. Currently, we have eight hundred and thirty-five students that are across our programs, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about those programs in a moment. We have a hundred and ninety-eight students that are serviced through our itinerant staff. Our itinerant staff are staff that may be helping students that are visually impaired or hearing impaired. They actually go out and they branch into general education buildings and into classrooms. And so they work with your teachers, with the student that may have a visual impairment, that may just need an extra support, maybe some magnification in the class. We also run contractual services, so we partner the districts together, especially in the areas that have shortages, like occupational therapy or physical therapy. It may be that, like a district such as Diamond Lake only needs two days a week of occupational therapy. So they'll contract to us, and then we'll be able to be a full-time therapist, two days here and three days in another one of our member districts, to be able to help in those shortage areas. We offer diagnostic evaluations. This is a very highly specialized area. We've seen an increase in this area, especially with our little students. Our kindergarten and first graders are actually increasing at the greatest rate. They come to school, and we're finding they're unprepared. They have no behaviors in which they can sit into a classroom. And it's very hard to even evaluate them for special education services. So we have services where they can come and they can start learning those skills while we evaluate them, and are able to then figure out what they need to be able to be successful. On our campus and throughout Lake County, these are our center-based or our building-based programs. These programs provide the highest intensity of services. So Laramont School, at Gages Lake School, has two programs in it, roughly a hundred and sixty-seven students. This building is actually busting at its seams with the two programs we have. ELP is one of the programs there. That's for our students that have medical needs. So we have a lot of nursing support there, a lot of one-on-one support. Students have mobility needs, and so we have mobility specialists. There's a tracking system throughout the whole building to help the students actually get out of their wheelchairs. And it may be the first time they're out of their wheelchairs, able to simulate walking or even being in a swing. So it's a pretty dynamic environment. The other program there is our Lasso Three program, which is for our students with autism that have more behavioral needs and more intellectual needs. This is where a huge partnership that I know you'll be hearing more about, you've been hearing about, is looking at Fairhaven School. That's the program that we're really seeing an expansion in. And that was, that would be where we'd really like to be able to partner with you as a board, with our board, and be able to use that building and help and support that program. They need a lot of classroom space to be able to do some of those sensory activities where they have big crash mats or, you know, squeeze tunnels. Just a lot of different equipment comes with them. They are in a situation in which there's one staff member to every student, plus additional staff members. So they always have one-on-one instruction. Sid Lash Academy is our high school program for students with emotional disabilities. A feeder into that program is Gages Lake School. Gages Lake School has early childhood right now through sixth grade. Next year, it will have fifth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Next year, we'll be at what is called South School, which is going to be connected to Carl Sandberg School. So there'll be a middle school program for students with emotional disabilities, and then we'll have the high school program. Also at Gages Lake School is our shaping appropriate behaviors, our SAB program. And that program is also for students that have more behavioral needs, but they also have cognitive needs with that. So some of these students are actually able to do mainstreaming, where they go into a less restrictive environment. But it's with the students with emotional disabilities that really struggle in the setting of a general education classroom, or even the hallways or PE when there's a little less structure in the lunchroom. So we provide highly structured programs there. John Powers Center, next year will house our deaf and hard of hearing program, early childhood through eighth grade. And then it will also house our transition program, so that's kind of over here. And the transition program works on our eighteen- to twenty-two-year-olds with vocational skills. Our deaf and hard of hearing program is a very highly specialized school for individuals that are deaf or hard of hearing. And they are unable to be in a general education setting full-time because of their total communication needs. It's a full sign language environment. And we also have a high school program for those students to then feed into at Graves Lake North High School. Our regional safe school is not a SEDOL school, but we administer that, and that's because it's from the regional office. And this is for middle school and high school students that are either expelled or at risk of expulsion. And it allows them to be able to support districts' goals to make sure they're providing education for students who have maybe made really poor decisions, and we want to still be looking towards their future. Our sector programs, you have some of them right here in district. We love this partnership. This is a partnership where we pull resources together from our member districts to be able to provide for students right here within the general education building. So currently this year, there's a TAB classroom here. There's an early childhood classroom over at Diamond Lake. Next year, the early childhood classroom will stay. The TAB classroom will have to move. But we've enjoyed the partnership that we've had here, and the success that our students have. Because they integrate into your building and your culture and climate, and they've been very welcomed here. So we run a variety of different programs for different students' needs. But our main goal, going back to that exceptional services, is to give all students the experiences that your students have when they're here in your building. So when Dr. Seuss celebrated his birthday, we did Read Across the America, like some of your students may have done. This is at Laramont School, so our building, our students that have more medically fragile needs, we go ahead and put it on just the same way as you do, so that our students, we have an academic portion to all of our programming. Gages Lake School, talking about our students that need more movement. And so in the hallways, you will see sensory walks. And the students are learning how to be able to do those independently, so that they can then say, hey, I need a break. And they go out and they do their sensory walk, and then come back into instruction. And so those are some of the things that students will do multiple times a day. We have chickens hatching across our districts for a variety of reasons this year. We have our early childhood program with our deaf and hard of hearing students that hatch chicks, that are also our SAB program. Two different age groups, but focused on different learning standards. A lot of our students align to the alternate learning standards, which are the essential learning, essential elements. And so they're really working on kindness and going out and being able to, you know, talk about things such as whether they're talking about matter or solid and liquid, and what that would be in the real world. Whereas our students at our deaf and hard of hearing program are learning typical curriculum, just like your sons and daughters. And I think you're going to be talking about some curriculum with some of your programming needs tonight, that that would tie into. We also look at that whole child again. So we have partnerships with different organizations that come in. This was Myles for Smiles. So our students, we need to give them academic support, but if they aren't feeling healthy and they don't have healthy mouths, they're not feeling good at school. And so we have partnerships within our schools where we have dentists actually come on site. We have doctors that come on site and will do immunizations, so that our students can be in school as much as possible. We also have extracurriculars. So we have sporting events that happen, and art shows for our students, because we want a whole well-rounded student. And so these are some of the different events that we've had this year throughout our middle school and our high school programs. And we have Special Olympics that start at age nine and go up. A very valuable time for our students to learn compassion and love. And these are actually two classmates cheering on as they went to state for track and field. So we get big when we have state winners. They look a little younger than, you know, when they win at state at Mundaline High School, but we still, well, at Stevenson, but we still celebrate them just as much and have big ticker-turk grades and pound the, you know, the drum. But our real focus is to be able to help be an extension of you and your district and provide services for your students that would be in line with your goals, both academically, socially, emotionally, and then looking at lifelong goals. So that's really what I wanted to share tonight. I can take a couple questions, I think, or...
Sure.
There's any quick ones? Otherwise, tomorrow evening, there's an orientation at six fifteen and a board meeting at seven o'clock, if someone can join me. I don't know who, if you've decided who's the rep yet, or how that will work. So otherwise, if you miss this meeting, we can catch up later, too.
And I was going to ask, Val, would it be okay if we had rotating board members in case one person couldn't commit to all of them at least?
Definitely. Just so we know, and I can make sure that it's a dual role and that we send out communication regularly, as long as I know who that is.
And when will the meeting schedule be out? For next year's meeting, sorry.
Next year's meeting, they, it should be out in the next month or so. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next presentation, one of the things we've done in the past few years as we've been together as a district leadership team is really strengthen and cancel the work that we do as departments, not only individual departments, how we work collectively together. So this is just an update, hopefully in benefit of our board members to say what do our current departments do, and then what their goals are, and what the group of comments this year. We will do a complete goals and priorities update at the next board meeting for each goal area. But this is a quick summary of the partnerships that we have with both high schools, with the department of instruction, as well as some of the gains we've made this year on dual language. And then Dr. Fredericks and Mr. Hanson are going to talk about special education as well as instructional technology. So I'm going to hand the floor over to... Well, I'm first, I guess. So the overview of the district departments, like I said, we're going to talk a little bit about special education, instructional technology, our high school partnerships, the dual language process we've made with the addition of Ms. Duffy as being a dual language support person in the areas of reading. So she's going to share some of the student data with the work she's done with teachers. And then an opportunity for you to ask any questions or give us ideas for goals or areas that you'd like to see approved or share. So, I believe now I can hand it over to Dr. Fredericks.
Thank you. What a wonderful evening to be able to share some of the great things we do in special education with SEDOL, but also within the district. One of the things I just want to make sure we start out with this evening is the continuum of services. So before our students get to SEDOL, they have a long journey of things we offer here within district. When we're talking about special education, we always want to talk about the least restrictive environment. And that is everything we can do to support this child in the general education classroom. So this continuum is exactly where we start. After that, we do what's called resource support. If the child needs to be pulled out a little bit of core instruction in either reading, writing, math, or if they need speech and language or social work pulled out of the classroom, we do that on a very limited basis. We also have a lot of our support inside the classroom, and we do that by providing a second teacher with the general education teacher to work on targeted goals and objectives. If a child needs a little bit more support than that, we still have the opportunity, because all of our special education teachers do have their own classrooms, to pull the students out for longer periods of time. Sometimes we're working on goals of regulation and working on social, emotional needs. And sometimes we're working just on specific goals and objectives for core academic instruction. As we can continue down the continuum of services, that's where we begin our partnership with SEDOL. We have students who are in our SEDOL programs. We have students at Laramont, at the John Powers Center, at some of their other programs such as Gages Lake. So if there's any time that any of you would like to go and visit those programs, honestly, they are fantastic. Laramont is extremely impressive, and I certainly welcome that opportunity to take you on a tour over there. If SEDOL is not the appropriate placement, we do have a handful of students who attend programs outside of SEDOL in private placements. And continuing on down the special education path, I'm happy to report, we do not have any students in residential placements or in home-hospital placements. But if a child needed that level of support, that is something as a district that we are prepared to offer. It's just we would follow all of those continuum of services first. When thinking about so many things I want to share with you, it's very difficult to narrow down all of the exciting things we do. So I just wanted to highlight a few of the exciting things. CERTS, Social Communication, Emotional Regulation, Transnational Support, that's something I have mentioned in years past. All of our special education staff members are trained on using CERTS. And what we're really doing is having a very specific plan for children who are typically on the autism spectrum, but also students who have significant behaviors. And we look at their supports in terms of what is in place when the child is doing well. How can we capitalize on that? And what do we need to do to make sure that that environment is consistent across the board? Assistive technology. We have a wide range of assistive technology devices within the district. We have students who use iPads for their sole method of communication. And we also have students who require something a little bit more high-end in terms of communication devices. Assistive technology can be as simple as using highlighters or something to pinpoint exactly where a child needs to look, and it can be much more complex. But we, again, offer a continuum of those services and devices. Specialized seating and censoring materials are something that the district has been expanding throughout the last several years. We have hokey stools and fun seating in all the classrooms. We have standing desks in our classrooms, one or two here and there in each classroom, just so that students have the opportunity to really learn in a comfortable setting that works for them. So the days of asking children to sit still and listen are long gone, where our kids are given the opportunity to move. Part of that, we also have a sensory library. So each one of our buildings has all kinds of sensory tactile things and weighted vests and weighted blankets, so that we can determine if a child's having a difficulty with attention or anything else in the classroom, we can check out a product and see if it works for that child. And then if it does, we can order it, or if it doesn't, we can try something else. So we really are trying to pinpoint our support, and that's available to all of our students. That is not just special education, but special education houses it. Specialized curricular resources, same thing. We have students who are included, who are in any grade level, who are still learning to identify their names in print. And we make sure that our instruction is differentiated for them. And we also have students who are working above grade level but require a different type of support. And so we're able to tailor that to each child. Related services, this is just something I wanted to make sure that everyone knows. We do offer OT and PT, social work, speech and language, hearing itinerant, a psychologist and the nurse in each one of our buildings. So our students are given as much support in any one of those areas as they need. Tarn's disciplinary play-based assessments. That's a fancy way of saying that if we're determining if a child needs that special education services for the preschool-age children, we don't do testing like we would have years and years ago. The team plays with the child in a very specific setting and takes notes on the child's behavior and language, depending on who is writing that portion of the report. So speech and language, we'll watch how the child communicates. Social work, we'll watch how the child interacts in specific settings. And that's how we determine a child's functioning level. So we're very excited about that. We do make sure our general education staff is supported with our students with special needs in the general education classroom. So we do ongoing professional development... So we do ongoing professional development. This past year, we had Emily Rubin, the creator of CERTs, come in to do CEACs. And that is actually tier one, tier one being the general education classroom intervention for best practices. So we're going to continue that work this year and to strengthen our CEACs in the general education classroom. And then each one of our buildings has a lead teacher. So each building has a person who works directly with me to make sure that all of those special education details and overviews are in place. And I believe that is it for me and Eric is gonna pick up with technology.
Well, before we transition into instructional technology?
I was wondering, have we ever considered like the sensory hallway?
Yes, yes, we are so excited about that. We, last year, we have a donor each year in the district. And when we received that at the end of the school year last year, I was very excited that the whole leadership team allowed me to capitalize maving Diamond Lake School on the sensory hallway. And we will be putting it into the small gym at Diamond Lake after the construction is finished because I don't want it wrecked while, you know, we're moving boxes and doing this. So it is ordered and ready to go. We will have it, I'm hoping, before school starts, otherwise as soon as school starts, once everything settles down. But so excited about it. Yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
I have one slide, but I have so much to share. So I like to focus on the technology department because I wanna focus on two different areas. Our instructional technology, some highlights from the school year that could be on a slide, as well as our technology services that allow instructional technology to be implemented and flourish in teaching and learning practices. Focusing on instructional technology, a few highlights I would like to share that we've observed our students and our teachers have been implementing this year. One being students created e-portfolios where whether you're at Fairhaven or West Oak, students had differentiation in how they're able to reflect and collect and create electronic portfolios. And I like to see that as a foundational aspect this year and how it progresses on next year. Whereas when student-led conferences continue to be implemented, that students have a longer, have an e-portfolio that exhibits all their work that they have utilized over the course of the school year, actually years. And creating student authentic voice. So a big proponent is actually having not only an authentic voice, but an authentic audience as well. From last year to this year, from podcasts to student broadcast clubs having their own episodes and channels to be displayed from their voice and their perspective has been very, it's been fantastic this year. And that's been a new integration this year that we'd like to see continue to implement, but definitely a highlight from the instructional technology standpoint where it's not an individual, it's a team and they're working together to be able to create something authentic through to a bigger audience. Infusing challenge-based learning in maker space concepts. So computer science from the Fuse app, integration at the middle school to our Fairhaven friends who started incorporating maker space concepts and challenge and problem-based learning has been a fantastic integration this year and we're excited to see how that's going to continue growing not only at Diamond Lake School, but West Oak Intermediate and Middle as well. This is an ongoing and I think it's very much worth noting is the engagement in interactive lessons and resources that are happening within the classroom where it's not just one methodology of teaching and learning, but it's collaborative. Whereas our teachers and students utilizing resources such as NearPod, Flipgrid, Seesaw, Google Classroom and Virtual Reality and many different ways to engage our, all of our students, all of our learners, our teachers and our students in their learning as opposed to it being one way or the paper way. And I can't say, it's not all of this without sharing that our technology media specialists, our teacher leaders that are in each building, having the opportunity to provide monthly professional development to all the staff that focuses on many different topics and give our teachers an opportunity to be able to ask questions and learn how to implement more and more meaningful technology into the classroom as opposed to having to see it themselves. Regarding technology services, I'm very proud to say that we continue to grow and develop our cybersecurity awareness for district-wide, not only our students, but our staff and our administration. Where we've implemented professional development district-wide with all of our staff incorporating two-factor verification for all of our users, I'm sorry, for all of our administrators and next-year users where we wanna make sure everybody's safe, as well as email tests, phishing simulations, all that fun stuff that people love to hear about. But it keeps us safe and secure and keeps us all on our toes. It's one of those things that, it's not a one and done. It's one of those things that we wanna make sure strengthens grows and we are aware of it personally and professionally so that everybody is safe not only when they're here, but also when they leave. Our technology department is modernizing our services. So with, in tandem with getting E-Rate funding, we are going to be modernizing our infrastructure whereas we're gonna update our switches, our wireless, our wireless internet that we have here as well as our bandwidth to grow and not to be in our current, but think about where we're at in the future to support all of our devices and our iterations that we have in teaching and learning. And not all of this is shared by, is done in isolation, is done via team, not only our technology department, but our finance department, our curriculum instruction, as well as incorporating teachers for focus groups to select devices that they would like to use in their classrooms. So that's a little bit about technology. Anybody has any questions, please? Feel free.
Before we transition into the high school slide, I just wanna share, I know that four years ago when we started, that was really an area of priority, was the partnerships with both high schools and making sure that we strengthen those and create them. And so I know that they were, there were opportunities that we definitely have taken advantage of and, you know, Dr. Girah and myself, as well as Mr. Williford, meet with the Stevenson group and the Mundaline group. But Steve's gonna talk a little bit about just the work that the leadership team has done in the area.
So I'll start with the Mundaline Consortium for Student Learning. So as Dr. Sharma Lewis was mentioning just a moment ago, two years ago, the superintendents and the assistant superintendents of seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-nine and one-twenty came together to develop the Mundaline Consortium for Student Learning. And in that, we started last year and continued this year with the development of math vertical articulation. I will talk about Stevenson after the Mundaline group. So last year and this year, the Mundaline Consortium for Math came together. We tried to identify the gaps that existed between eighth grade's Common Core Math and Algebra I. And so what we did is tried to boil down and prioritize some of the standards where there may have been gaps between those two grade levels. We've had some quality dialogue, a couple of really nice vertical articulation days that have occurred over the last two years. They've allowed us to develop a bank of common assessment items that help us sort of align the curricula a bit better, recognizing too that we feed into two feeder schools, that can be a bit of a challenge at times. But at the conclusion of this year, we will have, we've had two years now where we've had a bank of assessment items that our eighth grade students take. And then we go back as a group in the Mundaline Math Consortium and identify some of the gaps and areas of weakness to allow us as a middle school math team to then focus on those areas. I should also say that it's myself and then both the eighth grade math teacher, Mark Goldberg, and then the seventh grade math teacher, Kimmy Solin. So we work with the freshman math teachers at Mundaline High School and then also the seventh and eighth grade math teachers at the other feeder schools in Mundaline and then also Fremont. This year then, we added to the consortium with ELA. And so what we did in the fall was we developed basically a steering group that came together to determine what it is we need to focus on. Between eighth and ninth and tenth grade ELA, there are like a hundred and seventy standards. So to be able to walk into a group of educators and have that broad of a spectrum, we really needed to boil it down and create some focus areas. So we, we focused on informational text and vocabulary. And so our, our work this year is really setting the foundation for our work together as a team with the English Language Arts Mundaline Consortium for next year, where we plan on looking at development of common assessments which sort of tie our curricula together and then getting into the hairy work of developing some performance rubrics which will help us determine exactly what we expect kids to know and learn and be able to do. Any questions regarding Mundaline at this point? And then I'll just jump to Stevenson. So with Stevenson, we've continued our longstanding tradition as Dr. Sharma Lewis had mentioned earlier. Mr. Williford, myself, the content leaders at, in science, social studies, math, fine arts, digital media arts, PE, art, all work with the many directors that Stevenson has. So one of the great things about working with Stevenson is they have, they have a plethora of resources for us and so they have directors for each of their content areas that really do the same type of work that I just described with Mundaline. But they're at different points in their development. As, as I meet with the directors on a regular basis, they, they give us, they give us updates because I'm unable to be in all of those curricular meetings. And so just generally speaking, the Stevenson Consortium does very much the same work. Tries to identify the standards that they wanna focus on. They develop student learning targets based from those standards. Seek to create common assessments that tie all of the curricula together to the best of our ability. And then extend that to developing some content-specific instructional strategies. And each one of those groups, science, social studies, ELA, math, they're all at different points in that sort of development. So I know science has done some phenomenal work before we, we got here. And this year in our update, I believe it's Steve Wood, right, Chris? It's Steve Wood. He was sort of giving his update and just sharing like how he doesn't wanna open up that can of worms yet, but he's gonna have to go back and revisit and do all of those things over again. So it's, it's an ongoing process where it's continuous review and refinement and reflection. Any questions about the high school partnerships?
I have a question. So as part of that, then do you get feedback from both of the high schools on how our students are performing and whether or not we need to make curricular adjustments that would better prepare them or maybe do things differently for those kids?
Well, I, I think with Stevenson, so few of our kids go there that there's some limited data that they share. And I think we shared a couple of months ago.
I know we've, we've seen data before, but I just didn't know if you get feedback. So as students are taking certain classes, you know, and they maybe are doing an outstanding job or maybe need help in one area where then that can be identified as, okay, like these kids, we need to focus our curricula more in this area. We need to strengthen what we're doing here or we need to offer something different in this place.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's the spirit of this work with Mundaline now, is trying to identify those things, looking at the gaps, the weaknesses, the strengths. Making sure that we're on the same page in terms of what we expect.
Sure.
We could, we could look at a standard, all of us in this room could look at a standard and have a different definition. And so there, I mean, there's some ambiguity there, but that's exactly, I would say at this point, I don't think we've extended it into other areas beyond ELA and math at this point. Probably because of the resources that we have and the time. But, you know, as we get math up and running, which I think we've done a pretty nice job, and then ELA to follow, I think those things are gonna come in the future. Yeah. But yeah, that's the, that's the spirit of that work, exactly what you're describing. Any other questions? So then, the next update I, I have is related to dual language. And so, you know, both proud and excited about the dual language program and some of the heavy lifting we've done over the last, I would say, eighteen months. Ms. Duffy, and I will talk a little bit about the program and some of the data. But Ms. Duffy and myself, as part of the dual language leadership team, have, have really taken a look at the program over the last eighteen months and redesigned it to where this year, in kindergarten and first grade, we have an eighty-twenty model, which did not exist in the previous years. And then next year, that eighty-twenty model will graduate up to second grade where it'll be a seventy-thirty model. What that means, for those of us who may not know, is that eighty percent of the day is expected to be in Spanish while the other twenty percent of the day is to be in English. This year, we've done a lot of heavy lifting in terms of developing the Spanish language arts roadmaps and frameworks. We are really seeking to, with these shifts, reorganize our scope and sequence for Spanish language arts. In that, we made the adoption, or we, we took on the adoption of the K through two Estraida Phonics Program where Ms. Duffy has worked closely with the K-two teachers to recog, well, having recognized and identifying a program that really meets our needs in terms of phonics development. We've done a nice job this year in investing in grade-level Spanish reading resources. So at the end of this year, I sat down with each of the grade levels, K through five, and adopted literacy baskets that are from the American Reading Company, which have been, I would say, genuinely vetted because some of the concerns there with resources in Spanish is that they're not authentic. And so I really rely heavily on Ms. Duffy and the other dual language teachers to identify resources that are authentic and that, and meet the needs of both our teachers and our students. Excited about next year in terms of graduating our sixth through eighth grade Spanish social studies course, all the way through eighth grade. We are lucky that we have a quality educator in Ms. Diana Enriquez who's been able to take on these social studies curricula and be able to, to bridge that through the Spanish language arts as well. And then finally, what we're looking to do is next year, the Fuentes and Pennell Sistema de Evaluación, right? Will be grades K through five. So we're looking to be able to utilize the F and P, which is Spanish F and P in grades K through five. And then we are looking into bringing onboard the Apple Assessment, which is, starts in fifth grade and can work through high school, which is one of the recommendations that we got from Stevenson that allows us to recognize the acquisition of foreign language. So it's not a perfect solution for assessment, but it does give us a jumping off point in terms of where our students can go through fifth and eighth grade and then high school for that seal of bi-literacy.
Just to interrupt you for a second. So with these lessons, how frequently do you do those though? Then are they, you know, is F and P administered two, three times a year or is the Apple administered?
Yeah, the Apple Assessment is once a year. Sort of an end-of-year attainment assessment.
Okay.
The F and P, Lizzie can probably speak.
I was able to do all K-one, first and second grade students four times.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, but since, you know, the extra, the interventionist, whereas the, the upper grades don't have necessarily someone to administer it that often.
Yeah, so just, you know, so those of you who are, are new to the board, we were able to reallocate some resources last year and bring Ms. Duffy on as the K-through-two Spanish reading interventionist, which has been a huge help, not only in assessment, yes, we have, we have a, I think, a better model for K-through-two assessment at this point. But also I would say that because of her expertise and some of you have had your children in her class, you recognize what a strong educator she is. She's also able to tie in the instructional practices and methodologies K through two. So it's been a really nice sort of linchpin having Ms. Duffy in our leadership team because what she does is brings that knowledge and that structure to early literacy in Spanish and ensures that there's some consistency going through those grade levels because it's not something we've had before. And if you take a look at any of our instructional programs, for that matter, you recognize that there's, there's resources and supports and intervention. And so it was nice to be able to sort of reallocate some of our resources to provide those same things in our, in our dual language program this year. So Ms. Duffy's gonna share a little bit.
Can I ask a question about the assessment? Isn't measuring just like each student's like progress in learning Spanish? And does it like have any, are there any benchmarks or are there like comparisons to other school districts to see how we're stepping up or?
So for which assessment, the Apple or the?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know which one. I don't know which one it's.
Well, so for the Fuentes and Pennell is a benchmark reading test. So it's, it has a benchmark and it measures students against that. Can they decode? Can they talk about what they read? Can they understand it? And that's, if they can, then you graduate to the next level. And so it's a gradient. It goes, right now it only goes through probably fourth grade, but in the fall, we'll be able to assess all grade levels in Spanish.
And two, with the F and P assessment, there are sort of grade-level criteria that define what level a student should be within each grade level. So for example, for F and P, we start out in kindergarten as an AA and you potentially make it to about a C as a dual language student. One of the challenges we have in the world of dual language is a lack of standardized assessments. So in the regular education setting, we have MAP, we have IAR, we have, you know, Illinois Science Assessments. But we really, ourselves and other districts, rely heavily on local assessments like F and P to guide their programs. The Apple assessment, again, is the acquisition of foreign language learning. So it's typically for like a L-one or first language English speaker, learning how to speak Spanish or Chinese or whatever it might be. They offer these assessments. It may not be the most appropriate assessment for many of our first language Spanish students learning. But at the same time, because we lack some of that standardization, I think it's important that we jump onboard, not only for our district, but also for those kids who want to eventually seek that seal of biliteracy as well.
How would you compare our dual language program to programs you see around, at least around here? It seems like you've all done a lot of work here, made a lot of great investments here.
Well, I will tell you this. As we have spent, you know, the last two years revamping our dual language model, we didn't do it in isolation. So we looked to U forty-six, which has a huge dual language program. We looked to Crystal Lake, which has another very successful dual language program. And we looked to District fifty-four in Schaumburg, which has a pretty notorious dual language program as well. I've worked in U forty-six and have some connections there. I've spoken with some people at, are the dual language director in fifty-four and sort of married those program designs to our own this last year. So in terms of process, I think we're very similar to other successful programs. One of the challenges is then, what are your outcomes? And especially when we're looking at standardized assessments, that begins to be a question that I don't necessarily have an absolute answer for because of the nature of what those assessments are and what assessments are offered. But in terms of the products we're producing, the process that we're involved in, I feel very confident that we're moving in a really solid direction. And I think that, just like with any program development, or, you know, you evaluate the program and then you make changes accordingly, I think we're moving in the right direction.
No, I mean, it certainly seems so. And I remember a similar presentation last year.
Yeah.
And very impressive and, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not selling ourselves over short.
No, no, I wouldn't say that at all.
That we're getting full credit out, sort of out there for everything that's going on.
I would say that as a leadership team, we are quite proud of, we're quite proud of ourselves and what we've done over the last couple of years, so.
Yeah, it's the most cohesive dual language team that I've been a part of and seen in this district. And, you know, we have the support of obviously you all as the board and the administration. And it feels as strong as it's ever been. And it's only going to get stronger. And the teachers are very collaborative, like it's a tight-knit group. It's a good group.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Let's take a look at the next slide. So Ms. Duffy's going to share with you some of this.
Okay, so this is the data from the benchmark assessment.
And a lot of this is qualitative as well. As much as we try to make it numeric and quantitative for your observation, I think too, it is a bit qualitative when you're trying to understand a child's reading level. And there is some subjectivity, which we try to eliminate by giving all of the assessments to Ms. Duffy.
So then is our goal eventually to bring in a second Ms. Duffy? Or was still?
That was my question.
Or can we clone Ms. Duffy?
Well, the underpinning of this presentation is that. So, you know, I'm just kidding.
That is really our goal. I mean, we've talked about that a lot.
Ultimately, yeah.
I think that would be really exciting. I mean, I think that this data is incredible when you think that these kids are also expected to make similar progress in English. So they're having to do this twice. And just to see the difference between first and second grade is huge because all the data that I've read has said that you will see your kid, if they're into a language, be behind really until they get to third grade. So to see the way that this is panning out for these students is amazing.
Yeah, and.
It was amazing to see, I mean, to sit down with kindergarteners, you know, at the very beginning of school, kids who have never seen written Spanish, have never, you know, some kids never had a book read to them or whatever. And then to sit down with them and they, I mean, it was unbelievable. I was like, and I said to the kindergarten teachers, I was like, you guys work magic. Like this is, it's amazing.
But two, it's great that Lizzie's part of, Ms. Duffy's part of, all of the curricular development days that go, that take place, because she sits with them, talks about what are the benchmarks in reading. So it's not just an interventionist position, but I think it's also a great cause for like instructional coaching, which is so important. And I think that's been one of the sort of, you know, hidden consequences that has come out of having such a quality person in that role. It really, really benefits us.
I think when we first started, there was a supportive instructional aids in those dual language classrooms. I think those may have been more needed as teens online. And so what we've heard from dual language teachers was we need more support for these kids in the classroom, but that's all we were used to. So when we look at it as we know, is we needed support not only for the kids, but we needed support for the teachers. So I think this was a great compromise of Ms. Duffy being able to support the teachers, work with them, be an additional resource, help coach them, help educate them, lead them along on the dual language team and work in partnerships with Dr. Rock. But also be able to support and work with the kids. So I think it's just a great balance and a great use of resources. And it is our goal ultimately to take it out to the third, fifth grade colleges. It will be nice, but it will be organizationally, so that one person can work in the same building. It's going to be consistent.
How do you see this data changing after we move fully into the eighty-twenty, seventy-thirty model? Like, so like in two years, after that's been fully implemented, do you see this data changing, like?
Well, I think over time, what you're going to see is kids becoming closer and closer to their grade-level proficiency scale in F and P. And so within the F and P scale, there's sort of a, each grade level has a certain, certain letters that are associated with it, like I was, like Lizzie was saying before. Kindergarten is, you know, AA through C. And then first grade is AA through J.
J, yeah.
And then so eventually, what we'd like to see is, and we have to think about this too. We have our L-one English and L-one Spanish speakers each learning. I mean, the goal is to get to grade-level proficiency in that language.
So like eventually by, I mean, the goal is, in which, you know, I could see in the future if we continue to like strengthen our program, is, you know, by fifth, sixth, seventh grade, it's like both reading levels are up here. And especially with being more Spanish, our program moving to more Spanish-heavy and the ease of learning to decode and read in Spanish, where kids can crack the code quickly and then it goes right into comprehension. And so you can have kids, whereas in English, it takes a little longer. But so I see, I see those levels increasing as our.
I think, yeah, and I think though, too, realistically recognizing that learning two languages within the same six-hour time span within the day is heavy lifting for a child, which is one of the reasons why it does oftentimes take, you know, till sixth and seventh grade where they do get to that level of proficiency. Some of the research we've looked at, it takes between five and seven years to acquire a language proficiently. But then even at that point, we're not only just learning to read, we're pushing into the world of content. And so, yeah, they're learning Spanish, but then they're also learning social studies and they're continuing to learn Spanish language arts. So, you know, I think all of those things have an impact on, all of the things that I just mentioned have an impact on where kids will ultimately end up. Not to mention what are the supports that exist outside of the school as well. Because some parents may be able to support that language acquisition more than others, depending on the native language that's spoken in the home. Did you want to touch base on the last slide? So these are the students that you've worked with?
Oh, this is just a tattoo of my own horn. I guess Steve put this in. But it was just the students that I saw for intervention. I did intervention with first grade and second grade and just the average level growth of the intervention students for first grade compared to the target growth and also for second grade.
So it's essentially the same ranges of growth, but the kids that she's worked directly with have increased their growth range, increased their levels.
So whereas if those kids were, if the teacher was, you know, needing to see those groups and do an extra intervention with them as well as the rest of her kids, and I wasn't there, I'm not sure that they would necessarily make that same growth.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Duffy, thank you, Dr. Rock, and thank you, Mr. Hanson. Thank you, Dr. Fredericks, and thank you, Ms. Don, in the back. I know that you can stick around to hear this wonderful presentation. Thank you for sitting. We really appreciate all that you guys continue to support all the teachers, but our students. So nice job. Thank you.
Yeah, all really great stuff.
Okay, we can move on to our business agenda for the evening. The first item up on the business agenda is the omnibus boat agenda, which we will be going on at our next meeting in two weeks. I don't know if anyone has any questions about this item. It's routine. If not, no questions. All right. Derek Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the resolution for prevailing wage rate, which we'll be also wrote it on at the next meeting. Does anyone have any questions about that? I know there's a memo included in our packet about it. No, okay. This is just standard yearly practice. Then the next item is the first reading of the press policies. No, I, okay, it's sorry. Gotcha. Is the review of the district consolidation plan?
This too is just an annual update. It's the new way the state is reporting all the grants. They're putting them all together, not the state, actually the federal grants. They're putting them all together into one plan called the district consolidating plan. And so each of the departments applies for the grants and will be putting in one plan together. So we don't only ask for board approval, we do that separately. So this is just, we really haven't moved it in. So if anybody has for action next year, next meeting too.
Okay. Perfect. So then the next piece is the first reading of the updated press policies. So this, for those of you who aren't familiar, essentially, we have a list of the policies that are being updated. And if you go into Board Book, you'll see kind of the summary of the different changes that are being made there. I don't know if anyone has any questions or would like to discuss anything. We could also briefly discuss before we vote at the next meeting.
And if you look through, a lot of, you know, the green are just kind of like the legal references that have been updated.
Yeah.
And so, and then the red are just kind of edits on words that have been changed. So this current policy, or this current press plus issue does not have a lot of changes to policy.
Right, just nothing really so. Right, no.
Right.
Exactly. And honestly, that's how much of these updates are, just to let you guys know. It looks, it always looks like a lot of text, but typically it's just those references that are updated. Okay, and we will move on to approving. So the last two items that we're going to discuss are items for action for this evening. The first item is to approve the classified staff salaries for 2019, 2020. Those we discussed at our last meeting. I'm assuming that all of our questions were answered then. So if we don't have any further questions, we will move on to approve it. May it resolve the Diamond Lake Seventy-Sixth Board of Education approves the recommendation to approve the classified spreadsheet as presented. Could I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second. Armenta?
Hale? Yes.
Heltman?
Yes.
Conella?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, and then the next item is personnel item. May it resolve the Diamond Lake Seventy-Sixth Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have two new hires and one resignation up for action this evening. Can I have a motion to approve?
So.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Heltman?
Yes.
Conella?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Sure. Also in your personal report is the last item, which is for information only. Mr. Steveld, he currently is a P E teacher and has just completed his enrollment certification to be a special education teacher. So we have helped him, and Mr. Williford has recommended him to do an internal transfer to be a special education teacher. So Mr. Steveld will no longer be teaching P E, but be a special education teacher as part of the agenda. So we'll be posting that in total position, correct?
That's Mr. Problem's position because it's fifth grade.
So sorry, we will be posting.
It is, but we're all good to go. Yeah, all good to go.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our business agenda. Moving on to board discussion, do we have any items for board discussion this evening?
No, just that I just wanted to share a quick update that facility projects, as you can see, have started. We have two almost full dumpsters out front of the demolition that has been done from West Oak and Interview. So we will have an update at our next meeting with some hopefully great ventures.
Thank you. Okay, freedom of information requests. It looks like we had two.
Yes, one of them has been, Smart Procure has been addressed. And then ProPublica, we are still kind of compiling and executing there. So at the next meeting, we'll have not only the requests, but then also the response included.
Sure. Notices and communications?
Again, just wanted to share with you the fantastic news about the Google and some article that was published. Some of the article that was published regarding our shop. And then the May 2019 Student Spotlight that was in lieu of a Diamond Edge department updates. We had so many wonderful and amazing things that our kids did and accomplished this year. You know, not only academic, it's been in fine arts, and in music, and just in spelling bees, and in athletics, that we just wanted to really take an opportunity to highlight that. So that's in there at home at the last school.
That was really exciting to see.
We really, we really see the kids.
Yeah, and I thought that that was a really cool and different update to kind of showcase the kids in the district and all the different things going on. And this is just kind of curriculum updates.
We really haven't seen anything like that in a while, so.
I don't, I don't think we've ever really seen it where it was all compiled together. So you really got, like, the whole picture. I think we just kind of get piecemeal pieces, which is great in the, at that moment in time, but then you kind of don't remember. You know, and it's nice to kind of see that comprehensive update. I thought it was really, really neat to see.
Yeah, we have a lot of great things going on, so it was nice to showcase them. And thank you, Mr. Wilford, for compiling all the information, and Mr. Hanson, for, of course, sparkling it out.
The other notice, the communication, the board did get an email. Were you having that? I don't think I sent it to you, because I forgot about it. I apologize for that. The board did get an email that we were, about graduation gowns.
Oh, we did, we did, and I passed it out to Mr. Wilford.
Okay.
And he's discussed it with that parent.
Okay.
We're gonna look at it for next year.
Okay.
I responded to their email. We will investigate to see if there's a more environmentally eco-friendly solution to gowns.
I don't think we're the only school that purchases gowns. I would say that every other middle school that I saw also seems to.
I think there are some that are not synthetic, though, that naturally break down.
I feel like the cotton gowns, I think, might be challenging.
Again, we're gonna investigate it.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, we did.
Oh, they did. Then, any others? Do we have any others? I have another. Oh, I skipped public comments. Got too excited. Do we have any public comments and petitions on non-agenda items? No? Okay, well, now moving on to others. For the others, we do need a seat all representative to go tomorrow. I don't know, I can't remember at our last meeting if anyone volunteered to go.
I did.
Did you?
Yeah, I'm available to go if, if anybody else wants to go.
It would be awesome if you could go. That would be great, and I don't know if you want to go going forward, but.
We'll see how it goes.
Okay. We can also decide when the meeting schedule comes out.
There's only four.
Yeah, four.
Where is it?
It's at, it's at Laramo School, like, it's just like Road.
Four century, maybe, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, but, because sometimes they do change locations, so let us double check that.
Thank you.
Daisy, please stand up.
Okay, with that, we will move into executive session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony and complaint lodged against employee or legal counsel for the district to ensure confidentiality, and also for collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
Solu.
Second? Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Juan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for all the.